Good evening, this is the New Market Planning Board, Tuesday, June 8th, 2010. Please join us in the pleasurable evening.
............................................................ Tonight we have, Belle Shelton has a business appointment and we've asked Justin to sit in. And Peter Roy is ill and we've asked Adam to sit in. So we have a good group. At 7:05 I'll open the meeting for public comments. Seeing none from the vast TV audience at 7:05 and 10 seconds, we'll close the public comments. Next on the agenda is a review and approval of the minutes of May 18. Are there any comments, corrections to the minutes?
Rick? Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 18, 2010 meeting as presented.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
One abstention? Two abstentions.
That wasn't he, that's why.
Moving on to regular business. Diane is going to give us a brief update on the New Market Mills LLC and the developers' agreement.
Since our last meeting, what sort of activity has occurred? I don't know if you noticed the roadway under construction, but Mr. Chinberg ended up hiring Severino, who is the contractor who did the downtown project. And he did the curbing and the realignment of the sidewalks and the driveway work, all the work within the public right-of-way, which if you recall, there was a stipulation on the planning board approval that that be done by May 31st. And they achieved that goal, which is incredible. And as you know, they were out last week and paved. And from what I understand, I haven't driven through town today, but I understand the striping is completed and the downtown is in a mint condition. And the coordination between Mr. Chinberg and the town with respect to getting all the work done in time for paving, all worked out very well and so that work is now complete. There are a couple of glitches along the way. There's going to be a need for redesign of handicap ramp in front of the Riverdale property because of grade changes. And right now, the engineer for, Mr. Chinberg, is reworking that design and working with our engineer to make sure that it will be in compliance with ADA requirements. We're about 99% complete with the developers' agreement. The only thing we're waiting for right now is confirmation from Public Service and the cost to remove the utility poles because that is going to be part of the performance bond. And we're trying to finalize that figure so that we can put that into the developers' agreement. And as soon as we hear back from Public Service, we can pencil that in and we can be done with the developers' agreement. We do have Underwood engineers under contract as our construction review engineer. And they'll be, you know, working, I guess they're going to start the site work with the parking lot sometime in this fall. And they're proposing another six weeks of construction site work into next construction season. So everything seems to be on schedule. They've reached a favorable agreement with the folks from Rivermore on the easement and their attorneys are working on the easement documents right now. So we should see something soon. So slowly, we're going through that punch list of items so that we'll be in a good position to get the plans signed so that they can move forward with the site work and be ready for their next tenant. The pedestrian bridge.
Bridge, thank you.
We will be hiring an engineer to work with us to put together the specifications and so forth and to coordinate that work, obviously, with the next phase of the development.
So is Chinberg going to build that or that's our, the way the grant works?
It's the way the grant works. Chinberg is providing a match. We're providing a match. But it will be a municipally managed project in the town.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
And the details is to, you know, responsibilities for maintenance and security and all that. We need to obviously work out the terms of those agreements before we get started. But we did receive official word from Department of Transportation that our grant has been approved. They have to put it on the 10-year transportation improvement plan. And then they'll be drafting municipal agreements and we'll be scoping out what the actual project work will be. And they're looking at next fiscal year, October 2010, for the start of the engineering aspects of the grant program. It's a two-year grant program.
October 2010 or?
Right.
Okay.
For engineering, this coming October, right.
For engineering and then construction after that.
And then construction after that, that's correct. So...
The utility poles, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, there was, I'm really appealing to the members of the TRC and the negotiations we had with Mr. Chinberg. If you recall, when we were looking at establishing some deadlines, if you will, for removal of the utility poles, we were unclear as to whether the town would have all of its work completed by a certain timeframe. So that we attached a condition that tied his responsibilities to remove the poles to a timeframe 120 days past the town's completion of the underground work. And, you know, technically, the town has completed all of its work. The only thing that's really holding things up right now is that Chinberg needs to do his underground utility work so that he can make that connection. And once he makes that connection for his building, then the four poles across the street in front of the library can come down. And then likewise, he can take his poles down. So I guess I was looking for some clarification in wording. The way it's worded now, it's very obscure. And I was hoping that we could nail down a date. It was my understanding that everything would get done by September. And I guess I wanted to get confirmation from the TRC members and planning board members that were present during those negotiations, that that was their understanding.
What's the wording in the condition?
Say again?
What's the wording in the condition?
It says, "The removal of overhead wires along Main Street shall be completed, shall be done within 120 days of the town's completion of undergrounding of the wires." That's the way it's worded now, which is really kind of vague. And so we thought we would tie, it should tie it to a specific date.
Why is that vague? Did the town finish their underground wires?
The town can't take the poles down until, it's kind of a catch-22 situation. The town can't take its poles down until he connects into the, until he's ready to make the connection for his underground utilities. And he hasn't started his onsite work yet. So what was suggested, and I, let me get my notes out, please bear with me for a minute.
So we tied it to the wrong thing, you're saying?
Right. We should, we should have tied it to the completion of the paving or, it was suggested that we tie it to the actual issuance and he's willing to complete the work within 120 days of when we got the permit from the state, which is really is, you know, known as to proceed. So we threw that out as a...
DOT permit.
The DOT permit. So what that means is that all the utilities would be, and the poles would be removed by September 18th if we use that benchmark. And I wanted to just throw that out to the board, just to, for clarification, so that we can put the precise language in the developers' agreement. Because I think, you know, we all have expectations that that will happen within a short time
So the town has their underground utilities put in place. Is the town taking down their portions of the poles yet? No, they can't because he...
They can't take down the four, or three or four in front of the library because it's tied to his project.
Okay. But how about the other ones in town?
Those are all down.
Everything else is down.
Then his 120-day clock started, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
I mean, the only clarification, I didn't, I guess...
It's passed, actually.
Right.
Because technically, the town finished all its work February 1st. So as of June 1st, that's when that would have, that critical day would have occurred.
Well, yeah, I guess when we, if I, my recollection was that within 120 days of the town taking their poles down, the ones they're responsible for, he would get his down. I don't think the TRC understood, or at least this member of the TRC didn't understand, I don't want to speak for the rest, that there were four poles that couldn't, on the town side, that couldn't be because they were connected, they were integral to his development.
Correct.
So my, looking back, the interpretation should have been, the town, once the town has done their deal, taken the poles that they can take down on their own, that clock started. So in essence, he's...
Those poles come down on January 1st or...
Yeah. I mean, all the town was, and it happened actually sooner than we all thought. I thought that it was going to happen in May.
Now, you just...
They were very...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Adam.
They were very ambitious in getting it done very quickly, if you recall.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, what is the board's preference in terms of...
The poles are still there.
Whose poles? The four in front of the...
The four in front of the log.
Yeah, but they can't be taken down until he makes his electrical connection.
And he's asking basically for another 90 days from, essentially from tonight.
120 days.
120 days from the permits.
No, 90 days, right.
Right.
So it's asking for 90 days, correct.
And he, if I understood correctly, you said he's going to begin site work?
On his site sometime this fall.
So as part of that site work, he has to get his underground utilities in place? Are we sure that that's part of his site work that he's doing this fall?
Yes.
I mean, I...
He was agreed to do that.
Yeah, okay.
To get them down by September 18th is the date that he threw out. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same board with that, on the same page with that.
If you look on the plans where the condition is listed, it's somewhat nebulous. It's unclear. And in retrospect, the board probably should have been more specific.
I, in my opinion, if he's, if we can extract a date at this point, that's probably the best thing we can do.
And he did say September 18th.
My concern is that they're very visible and I'd like to see them down, that's all.
The ones in front of the library, as well as on his property?
Right.
As well as the 18th, too late?
I mean, you were the, you're the only...
I know.
TRC member here.
[laughing]
I was an alder.
Oh, no, no, okay.
Okay.
Well, what do you recall, Rick?
What he said. [laughing]
I'm lying, he swears to you. I'm lying, he swears to it.
I don't know about that. No, I believe that's how I remember it also.
We should have completely known all the work was going to get done because that was sort of the wild card. Nobody really knew.
I think really, the other part of that understanding is I don't think we understood there were four poles that the town was responsible for that were integrally related to how he got his power to the site.
Right.
Okay.
With that understanding, I think we would have, we would have changed that somehow.
That's correct.
So does September 18th cause anybody any problems?
I guess the only, it doesn't cause me a problem, I don't know if it caused the town a problem. I mean, John just said the town, they're out there...
I've reviewed it with both Julie Glover and Ed Wenousky and Phil McDonald. And it was agreed that that was a reasonable timeframe. Because we're, you know, trying to move Public Service along to get that work done because there's some...
What work?
The underground, the removal of the poles. We're trying to move Public Service.
So that's what I'm trying to get at. The four poles in front of the library, who takes them down? Public Service?
Well, Public Service takes the, the work, takes the poles down, but the town pays for us. That's the way it's set up in the agreement, is I understand it right now. And that they will be reminded of that obligation.
Are we missing the boat with PSNH by not putting more pressure on Chinberg? Not that I want to put...
I don't think that's where the pressure needs to be there.
I think just give, let's give Chinberg a date certain and...
I just want to make sure there's nothing else in the town that's, you know, with those four poles and, you know, we have, as an example, we had a contractor sitting here in town right now, we had to call him back. I would say we got to get Chinberg to move along so we can get our piece done. But that's what I'm just trying to figure out. I'm not hearing it.
We're waiting on him at this point.
Do we need a vote on this?
I would, just for the record, please.
George, you want to make a motion for this?
Do you want me to... Read the language first, would that help you? It's in, I have it in draft form in the agreement. "The removal of under utility poles and overhead wiring along Main Street shall occur within 120 days of the issuance of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation permit or September 18th of 2010 period." That's what the date is, the permit was May 18th.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to give New Market Mills LLC an extension to remove the overhead wires and utility poles within 120 days of receiving the New Hampshire Department of Transportation permit or September 18th, 2010, whichever occurs first.
There's, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion?
Is this just an extension of another 120 days, is it?
No, it's a clarification of when the poles will come down.
With a definitive date to do it.
Now it's a definitive date.
It's a definitive date, but it's still, it's an extension of roughly another 120 days.
Good.
90 days.
From now?
From now, right.
And there's no scheduling discrepancies with PSNH to get that work done out that far?
That might be an advantage because they can schedule that far out.
Right.
I don't know, but I'm, it might be, who knows? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a...
John, do I have one question? When Diane was talking about the elevator cost, and she mentions the municipal, municipalities...
The pedestrian bridge.
You have to manage the project. Okay. The cost of maintaining this project is not going to be the town's, is it?
It's, right now, the plan is, and will be negotiated, that that would be a responsibility of, and the developer has agreed, of the New Market Mills LLC, that they would take, they would cover the maintenance costs associated.
So Chinberg has that organization?
That's what he has indicated.
It's not going to fall on our taxpayers?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a 30-day time extension of approval for Hickory Pond Partners LLC subdivision. Diane, you want to give us just a brief background on that?
This is a project that was approved by the planning board about a year ago. I think it was June 9th, it was, yes, tomorrow, it'll be one year. And we've been working with the Hickory Pond Partners LLC. Mr. Catapano is here.
Catapano, yeah.
Catapano is here tonight and can answer any questions. But we, he came in in December and the board gave him a six-month extension. We've been working very hard in trying to meet all of the conditions. At this point, there's just really one outstanding thing, which is the developers' agreement, and that falls in our court. And I've been working on the legal language for that. But Mr. Catapano, if I'm pronouncing that correct, has received all his permits from the state. We've worked out all the language on the easements with legal counsel. If you remember, there were some deed restrictions pertaining to protection of the wetland buffers and the vernal pools. All of that language has been worked out. We do have approval from our town engineer at this point. There were a few, you know, boilerplate items that needed to be addressed. We have an operation maintenance plan for erosion control. And just this week, we finalized the language for their bank on the letter of credit and hopefully that worked out to satisfy that.
They issued it today, I just didn't have a chance to pick it up. I'll have it for you tomorrow.
So we are, we're very close at this point. And I'm actually recommending that the board grant another 30 days so that we can get this final work hashed out and completed. As you can see, the negotiations often are lengthy when it comes down to putting everything on paper so that there's a clear understanding. And by providing the 30 days, that would give Mr. Catapano the opportunity to review with his legal counsel. So, and he has agreed to the extension and we have a letter to that effect. Is there anything I overlooked?
I just wanted to ask you one question and I...
Certainly.
Could you step up to the... Sure, I'm sorry. Ray Catapano, Hickory Pond Partners. The letter from the fire chief?
Yep.
Have you, have you gotten that?
I have sent him a reminder and I will follow up on that again for you tomorrow and I'll talk to our town administrator, see if we can't move that along.
Because I know Bill Dussette had requested it two or three times. If it's not here by the end of the 30 days, can we just waive that? Because we all know, we did put on the plans what he wanted, which was the sprinkler systems in the homes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's acceptable by me, I would think.
Well, John has signed the plans, right?
Yeah. I mean, John has to sign the plans and has to be satisfied that all the conditions are met. We also have street numbers assigned to the properties and I need to share those with you, I believe. I don't know if you have.
Well, I got, I got tax bills.
Oh.
I actually got tax bills before I owned the property. I'm not sure why. But they had street numbers on there.
Oh, okay. So you know what the street numbers are now? So...
So let's see if we can get a letter from the chief.
Okay. So I would recommend the granting of 30-day extension, thank you.
All right. Any discussion or questions? Am I hearing a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant a 30-day time extension for the Hickory Pond Partners LLC subdivision approval, subdivision approval from today's, from today's date, June 8th?
Yes. I'll second.
All right. It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brett, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is some new business, I guess. We have a proposal from the consultant for a review and update of the impact fee ordinances. This should be in your packet from BCM Planning. I didn't realize that this was revised 10 years ago. And it was that long ago. Anyway, Diane, how would you suggest we proceed with this? He has a kind of an outline, a proposal here. It's not a firm and hard proposal. He's given us a cost range of $15,000 to $20,000.
Well, we wanted to give the board an idea of what the cost would be to do this. And I have since receiving this, I have spoken to Ed Wenousky. And we're going to be looking into different, the possibility of whether we can use the impact fee revenue to help finance the cost of the study. And we're going to be reviewing that with legal counsel to see if that's a possibility. What I would like to do is suggest that we set up a subcommittee to work with the staff and also, likely we'll have to go through an RFP process to hire a consultant. And I envision that, you know, the subcommittee would work with staff to help evaluate proposals as they come in and would do the interviewing and select the consultant. But also, I think it's important that we have a committee to scope out what exactly the study will be and what it won't be. And there may be pieces of it that might be farmed out to another consultant. In the whole area of wastewater and water, there's some new legislation that would put this squirreling into the realm of responsibility of the water and sewer department. And it may be that we would hire an engineer to work on that piece, because there have been some changes and what the acceptable methodologies are for determining those fees. But I think there's some decisions that need to be made. And I would also suggest that if we set up a committee, that we include some folks from the CIP committee and possibly that some of the departments who are directly affected so that we can have a well-rounded view of how we want to proceed in the future and can help get Mr. Mayberry or whoever selected the consultant, see information that's needed to do the evaluation and analysis.
Could you briefly review the, our responsibilities under the RSA for reviewing and updating impact fees?
Under the terms of our own ordinance that was adopted by the town back in 2001, 2000, I guess it was, periodically, the planning board is supposed to review the ordinance, review the methodologies, review the schedule of fees and update as appropriate. And also taking into consideration how that, how those funds have been used with respect to meeting our obligations to provide certain capital improvements. And it's necessary for us to do that as a, you know, a component of our impact fee ordinance. If it was ever challenged, it could be legally challenged, it could be, you know, viewed as suspect because we hadn't gone through that comprehensive review and analysis.
Is there a time, is there a timeframe for that?
I think our ordinance says five years.
Five years.
So it's long overdue.
So it's long overdue, okay. I guess that's what I was getting at.
Do we have an idea of how many hours were spent on the previous report to compare to the dollar figure?
We can ask Mr. Mayberry if he has that information. I don't have a file on the financial aspect of his contract. I would...
I mean, I think it's what, you know, in the same price range you kind of said it would be in, right?
Yeah.
I just wonder how many hours go into that dollar figure?
Um...
That could be...
I'm not sure what his multiplier is or billable rate, but...
We could solicit that.
We can ask for more detail on his, you know, fee schedule and cost and, you know, the number of hours. I think that's part of the whole RFP process so that when we compare different proposals, we're comparing apples with apples.
So there are other consultants out there besides BCM Planning that specialize in evaluating and recommending?
That is correct, yep.
Are they in that group up in Durham or...
RKG Associates, yeah. They're no longer in Durham, they've moved to Dover.
Whatever. I mean, that was one, but...
That's one. And there's also a group up in the Lakes Region, Applied Economic Research, Russ Tebow is another individual. I'm not sure if some of the other planning consultants do this kind of work, but, you know, we, we put out an RFP and took a number of firms and put in the paper and see what we can do with responses.
Do we need to have the committee established before the RFP goes out?
Since part of the RFP is putting together our scope and figuring out what it is we're going to do, I think it would be advantageous to have a committee in place so that we can...
The reason I'm asking is...
At least bring it forward to the council and, you know, underscore the importance of having this done and, you know, acting as a founding board so we can move forward.
Does this have to go to the town council before we can contract with a consultant to do this?
It depends on what the value of the, we have a new procurement requirement for different contracts. I'm not sure how...
Where would the funding come from?
Well, that's what we're looking into, to see if, we do have some consulting funds in the planning budget for next year. And I did ask Ed Wenousky if he could, you know, work with me to try to identify some potential... And I did ask Ed Winozki if he could, you know, work with me to try to identify some potential sources, one of which is the actual impact fees themselves.
Well, my concern is that we don't have a, not that we don't have a full board tonight, but we have...
I don't think the ultimate members can serve on the committee.
Well, that's my concern, so...
You want to postpone this?
I'm on the CIP committee if that will help you.
Yeah, you're on the CIP and Peter's on the CIP, so either one or, either one of you could serve on that.
Be helpful.
That would be helpful, but I just, you know, Val's not here, Peter's not here, Eric's not here. So that's my concern. I'm not sure. Anyone want to wave their hand and volunteer for this?
Again, I think we determined that Justin and I really aren't supposed to be on that, so I don't know about... It's really up to these two.
I know Val was very interested in it, but I don't want to, would not want to volunteer her if she weren't here too. And she's been very busy, I know that, so...
Were you able to nominate the members for the committee outside of the public forum here?
I would defer to the town administrator. Might be, you know, department head.
Well, question on, why don't, why don't we do this? You have a very good idea of what we need, even though there's not a committee, you have a very good idea. In anticipation of appointing a committee or having volunteers for a committee, why don't you start drafting, just as a draft basis, an RFP?
Sure.
And then when the committee comes together, there will be something to talk about and also identifying three or four potential responders. And let's try and move this forward even without a committee. I'm just reluctant to do something tonight with some people missing.
And I can look into the, you know, the process for getting approval and put a schedule together and do some of the organizational work.
Let's start that process. And maybe between now and the July meeting, we can...
Get some clarity.
By phone calls and emails and so on, pull, pull the right people together. Does that work for everybody?
It does.
Okay. All right, let's do that. And at least we'll get some forward momentum going here. Okay. The next item is an update on the Three North Main Street shopping mall center. Can you get with the executive summary update?
Here are my notes. Here are my notes. I did speak with Mr. Landry today, as a matter of fact, and he's still working on his project. As we had talked a little bit about at the last meeting when he was doing his initial feasibility studies, he wasn't fully aware of the extent of wetlands in the back of the property. And there's pretty extensive drainage system that runs through, actually adjacent to his property, but it provides, it's a stream that provides the runoff from the subdivision, excuse me, from the development will cause into. So he is, initially he had talked with a prospective tenant for the property and they were interested in possibly doing a drugstore. I think he had indicated that. And for a number of reasons, that particular project or tenant, prospective tenant didn't, they were unable to reach an agreement. I'm not sure of the details of proprietary information or restrictions. So he indicated that that deal didn't come to fruition. But he is talking to other realtors, including someone who's interested in a 20,000 square foot site in the front of the property closer to the road. If you remember, there was some, like pads that were identified in the front and with the committee shopping center in the back. And so he is continuing his negotiations with prospective tenants and hoping that something will come to fruition. The major concern that he has is the extent of the wetlands. Under the original plan that he showed us, he had a conceptual plan, there would be 80,000 square foot wetlands impact in that area and, which is, you know, two acres of land, which is pretty substantial. And so what that means, he's been in touch with the, trying to look at different ways of mitigating any impact or minimizing the impact. We're talking about mitigation plans and so forth. But what that, the upshot of that is that it means that the development is going to be, needs to be moved closer to the street to preserve the wetlands to the extent that they can be preserved. And it would mean downside scaling the project, so. And he was originally talking about a 65,000 square foot development and he would be, he said that it would go from 65 to 55,000 square feet. He is still trying to come up with some alternative plans to address the wetlands. He's also looking at possible rezoning or possibly a creative way to lay it out so that he can still meet the town's requirements. But he wanted me to assure everyone that he's still moving forward and trying to make this project work, so to speak. He's just had some delays and of course, you know, the concerns about wetlands also, you know, dampers the enthusiasm, if you will, of some of the tenants that he's been negotiating with. And, you know, this is a tight financial climate that we're working in and lenders are more and more particular about the viability of projects. So all these things weigh into that. So I provided some information to him today on zoning and, you know, encouraged him that if he wanted to come in and talk with the board at some point at a future meeting and look at some different development scenarios, that we'd be more than happy to meet with him and try to work through some of these problems with him to see if he can come up with some reasonable accommodations.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this? I guess the important thing is that it's, he thinks it's still viable and he's moving forward.
That's right.
Any other old business or new business? Anything else, Diane?
Yeah, I just wanted to, if I could, have a moment. Maybe we could take a recess and want to discuss something with one of our candidates.
Okay. All right, we'll take a five-minute break?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We're back in session now. Diane, you had something you wanted to comment on about the grant?
Yes, I received some additional information from Amanda Stone this week. She's the woman that met with us on May 24th at the work session. And it turns out that under the grant program that we were interested in submitting a proposal under, that they will not fund a general planning study as to the extent of drainage problems and what the issues are and, you know, sort of a generic white paper, if you will, on stormwater. What they would fund, what is eligible under their program is the actual development of regulations. And so I wanted to just share that with the board because it seemed towards the end of the meeting that we were going off in that direction, that we wanted to do more of a, sort of an overview of what the problem is and come up with a clearer handle on what the needs are and then move into actually implementing some regulations. So I just wanted to share that with the board and see if, you know, you might want to change the focus of the research a little bit so that we could maybe work specifically on regulations.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
Yeah, I would say we, I mean, we should go for it.
Go for the grant?
Go for the grant for the...
Be more specific.
For the regulations, for the development of either regulations or an ordinance. But my impression from that meeting was regulations might be the first step. Subdivision and site plan review regulation.
That's right, as opposed to coming in with the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, because ordinance is a thing that have a little bit more onus to get through and...
What do you need from the board to...
I just wanted to let you know that I think what we had initially, what we had agreed to is not something that is going to really be competitive in their scoring and to let you know that. And if you'd like to pursue an application where we put in a proposal that has some regulations written for us and, you know, that would include, you know, working with the board on what those regulations would be. I'd be happy to put something together along those lines.
I would.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Just want to make sure that was clear.
That's a sense of the board.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else on our old business? Anything else on a new business? Whose turn is it tonight?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.